They have some new information with you. They'd like to share with you how the things are going that we currently have, the programs that we currently have in place, as well as sharing with you a new option, a new program. So we would like for them to share the information and then we'd like to get feedback from you all today on your thoughts on the matter and go from there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Good morning. Just as a matter of reference, we've been working for you guys since Ed Murphy was here. We've been here for a little while and we appreciate being able to help y'all with this benefit. I'm gonna go ahead and pull up the presentation. I'm one of the two co-founders of TSA Consulting Group. We started back in 1994, 1995 and are presently in 66 of the 67 school districts in Florida and 24 of the 28 state colleges. So we appreciate everybody. What we're gonna talk about today is the state of your 403B voluntary plans and what they mean to the employees. Let's look at your current participation. Right now, you have a total of 987 participant accounts. Now that means people have put money into an account over the years that are still under your plan. The assets are about $38 million. Of those 987, only 376 are current employees currently contributing, with an average account balance of about $39,000. Now, the national average on an account balance is about $31,000. We're in about 2,000 school districts across the United States and those are our numbers, so we know them to be true, but you can't get them from anybody else, okay? Well, one of the reasons that you have a higher average account balance is not because you have a lot more people contributing a lot more money. It's because of this next slide. You don't have a whole lot of new people coming in to the plans, which means you have people that have a lot of money that's been there, but it's, you know, again, you don't have a lot of new people in. The average participation rate in the state is 29% in these plans. You're at around 17%. So there's not been a lot of new enrollments. Well, why is that? Well, first off, 8%, that means that 8% of Citrus County employees are not saving for retirement on their own. We ask the question, is it the economy? Is it lack of plan information? The answer is no. In economic times, we know we've been through a downturn, y'all had to make decisions on raises or non-races and things like that for the employees over the last number of years. It's been very difficult. But participation rates haven't really changed drastically because of any economy or economic downturns or upturns. It's been pretty consistent. A lot of people think that they're gonna be taken care of by the FRS and Social Security. Well, let's take a look at a couple of graphs. I'm gonna give you a sample of the FRS pension for somebody who was hired at the district, who would be hired at the district in July of 2014, starting at age 25. Well, starting at age, had a salary of around $36,000. If they retired with 33 years and they wanted to live on 80% of their income when they retired, this is what their chart would look like. The pension, okay, it's the dark blue. Y'all know that COLAs went away, right, in the state of Florida? So this person doesn't have a COLA. When Social Security kicks in, they're gonna have some sort of COLA. Right now, it's around 1.5%, which is the CPI, okay? Y'all do know that food and energy are not part of CPI, right? Okay. The red is the shortfall. So this person would have to lower their standard of living significantly if they wanted to retire after 33 years of service, if they didn't have any savings. If they had just put 3% of their savings, you can see where the green is, they would at least make it 10 years in retirement, living on the amount of income that they want to live on. We all know 3% is not enough to make up the gap because inflation is there. Now, this is based on a 3% inflation, okay? We used to have a 3% cost of living adjustment, right? All right, with that 3% cost of living adjustment, what does that mean to somebody in 20 years? It means their income almost doubles in that 20-year period, which means that if inflation's around 3%, their income need almost doubles in 20 years. Had a lady over in, she spent 35, 38 years. She's in her early 50s, okay? And she was retiring from a school district real close to here as payroll manager. She says, "I'm gonna have to lower my standard of living because I didn't start saving early enough." She started saving, but she didn't start saving early enough. She said, "I'm gonna have to, but I wanna retire. I've been here since I've been 18 years old, you know? I wanna do other things." But she's still gonna have to lower her standard of living. Those two were pension plans. Look at this third graph. This is where the state legislature wants people to go, and that's the FRS investment plan. Remember, there's a contribution that you make as a board to every employee that is in the investment plan. It's around 9% of their salary goes into the investment plan. Even with that, throughout their entire career, if they don't have the base pension, you can see the blue in this graph, that money runs out pretty quickly. Even when Social Security hits, there's a lot of red for people long-term. What does this mean? That means it's important for people to save on their own. Pensions in the U.S. since 2007, 48 have changed, including Florida, as you well know. 28 have increased employee contributions, which we know Florida did. By the way, we all know that it just replaced what the state was paying, that 3%, it's not an actual gain. It's just that the state is saving those money. 14 state have adjusted COLAs. Now, what does that mean? In the FRS, of course, in instituted contributions, they increased the average final compensation calculation from five years to eight years. What that means on average is that that means that the person's first-year pension payment is now 3.5% less than it would have been with the other calculation. So you can see, the small things make a big difference to people who are retiring. Cost of living decrease or is nonexistent after 2011. Somebody who has 20 years in, or who had 20 years in in 2011, they get the 3% for that first 20 years. But then the other 10 years, if they retire with 30 years, they get no cost of living. So it averages out to be 2/3, or 2% cost of living increase rather than 4% cost of living Right now, for people to enroll in a voluntary plan, they first must actively decide they wanna save. Now, you know the people that are out in the classroom, out supporting the classroom, out doing all the things that they have to do in their job? Is that the first thing on their mind? Probably not. But they still have to make that choice. Secondly, they need to contact and select one of the investment providers. Then they have to choose their investment type, whether it's annuity or a mutual fund platform. By the way, those are the only options under retirement plans governed by the IRS to get the tax benefit. Can't do options, can't trade futures, can't do all those things. It has to be annuities or custodial accounts with mutual funds. Then they have to decide on the amount to save each period. In other words, it takes work, okay? People have to take it and do it. Many people want to, they just never get around to it. So what we're recommending is a simplified enrollment process. We don't want to replace the investment providers in your plan because we fully believe, I mean, people didn't get into education because they are, they want to be financial geniuses. They wanna be, you know, they want to be, no, they wanna teach kids, they wanna help kids, they wanna do things, right? So it's not their first choice. Well, a simplified process that we would recommend allows employees to enroll within minutes. It adds a default investment option that is neutral to all of the other providers. And we wanna make sure of that because the other investment providers perform a great service because I always say 90% of K-12 employees know they need help. And of the remaining 10%, half of them need help, they just won't admit it, okay? It's the nature of, and by the way, in our own business, we have 80 employees, many of them are exactly the same. I personally like to go do investing 101 with them to try and teach them and encourage them to participate. That default account has to have a principal guaranteed interest because if you're gonna default or have a default account, you don't want anybody to take any risk with their money unless they make the choice to take risk. It allows for a penalty-free exchange to be any other provider in the plan. By the way, with the plan, I'm getting ready to kinda detail that for you just very quickly. All of the investment providers that have seen what we are recommending, they absolutely love it. They think it's great because then people are safe. It also allows you to provide, for you to actually establish an account on their behalf with a 90-day opt-out period. This could be for new employees and existing employees that don't have an account. You don't do this with people that are already saving, they already have their account. It's only for people that are not. And the way it works is you wanna make sure that they get the information ahead of time. This is where it's going. In other words, you make it an easy choice for them. You say, "This is gonna happen unless you tell us no." But they have to make an affirmative choice. "Yes, I agree, this is fine," or "No, I don't." And even if they say, "Yes, I agree," after their first payroll, they have 90 days after seeing their check to say, "Do I wanna continue with this?" And if they don't, money goes directly back to them from the trust company, does not come back through your payroll. So it's a very simple process for the employees and it's great for the people who say, "I wanna save, but I don't wanna go through all the work to choose." But what else happens? Think about it, human condition. Think about, if you have an account that's growing, what do you wanna do? Usually put more in it, right?
Take some.
Yeah, or take some, okay? All right. But really, no, I mean, a lot of people, when they see it growing as a retirement account and they see the benefits, then they get engaged. When they get engaged, then they seek help, which is exactly what we want them to do. Because it's not just safety, it's how you save, what fits your budget, what fits your goals. But you can't get there until you start. So that's extremely important. Under the simplified or auto enrollment process, it is supported by the federal regulations, Department of Labor, and the IRS since 2006. The Pension Protection Act of 2006 supports automatic enrollment. It's widely used in the 401K industry. Also, the Federal Thrift Savings Program instituted in the public sector as well. It's responsible for significant increases in participation. There was also a study that was commissioned by the FEA here in the state in 2014. The name of it is, "Should Public Education Employees Consider Automatic Enrollment?" It was done by Joni Strachan, who is a consultant in investing up in New York, and also Renee Wilder, who actually is part of the Federal Thrift Savings Program. She got permission to actually endeavor on doing the white paper. And I hate to read, but I'm gonna go ahead and read this to you because I think it's important. Their statement in their summary was, "Automatic enrollment presents districts and unions with the opportunities in a new decision tree. While there may be legislative and contractual details to attend to, this journey should ultimately help employees as they head toward more secure retirement. Districts and unions should jointly champion the effort that will enable employees to create a secure retirement, one that enables employees to retire on time." Had a superintendent that used to be here in Florida, is now up in Hagerstown, Maryland, tell me one day, he says, "I want people to be able to retire when they want to retire." How many people do you know that are still in the school system that would rather be someplace else, but they can't be because they can't take the pay cut? Questions? By the way, it is our full recommendation that the board approve this. Certainly.
And we're in a workshop, so we can give you the right shit.
Not today. Yes.
We're interested in your feedback and your questions and then maybe to bring it for a vote next, at your next board meeting. And I did wanna share briefly that I did have an opportunity to share this with both unions who did support the idea behind it. Yes?
I just wanted to ask if you had to spend any federal regulations that would negatively, would negatively impact this?
No, federal regulations actually encourage this, okay? That's one of the things that, and our job is to keep you in compliance, number one. And number two, to make sure that you have benefits that are to the benefit of your employees and have them structured properly. The one thing that we had to do is there are state garnishment rules about automatically taking money out of people's check, you can't do it. And even though it doesn't pertain to retirement plans, we don't even wanna go close to it. So that's why having them acknowledge that it's happening and say, "Okay, I'm okay with this." That way, they're making a positive reinforced opportunity, you know, taking advantage of the opportunity rather than it being forced upon them. So we've taken into account all the regulations, both state and federal on this, yes?
How many of the six providers vetted that provide the annuities and the mutual funds?
They were existing providers here in the plan and have been for many years. There were more than six several years ago, but some of the ones that were here did not comply with the new IRS regulations that came down in 2007 that were actually effective in 2009. So the six that you have are fully compliant, yes?
How are they vetted? In our system, who monitors them? And he's telling us that they didn't, there were some that didn't comply. But within the Citrus County School Board Organization, who or how are those companies vetted so that they have the opportunity to reach into our employee base for sales? Is it, thank you.
Several years ago, we went through a real process on how to bring down that funnel of providers that would be able to offer investment products to the employees, 403Bs and 457s. We had about, I wanna say around about 20 vendors. They were all over the map. They were corralling into the schools there all day long, sitting in the break room and taking advantage of opportunities of people walking in saying, "Buy my product, buy my product." We didn't know what was being sold out there. So we brought it down. We actually started with an idea of going to one provider. We'd had several conversations, not only with this gentleman and his partner, but also with the unions, and we decided to put forth an effort to have multiple providers, but yet more manageable. At the same time, the state was having the IBC model, it was Independent Benefit Committee, to actually do the same thing because the IRS regs were changing and they wanted to make sure due diligence was given to make sure we had the right providers within the school district and/or the state for the IBC. Mr. Stevens and I went through a lot of detail, a lot of review, to bring this down to the providers we have, to give an option, a no-load fidelity. That's a 1-800, you know, "I don't need any help with my investments, I'm gonna call 800, I know what I wanna do." We have a couple mutual fund providers. We have, you know, through Deborah Jones, it was Hartford, now it's Mass Mutual, then we have the Ledger Group. We have E who does the annuities, and then we also have, what's the company, AFG?
AFG.
Balic. They've changed right to Balic. And I think those are the five or six that we have. But that's kinda how we went through the whole process. We did our own due diligence and vetted it down. And then now, you know, Steve and Joe, they manage that for us because they are the third-party administrator of the whole plan. All the money goes through them, they then put it out to the providers, and they are the ones in charge of the custodian, so to speak, in charge of, you know, loans, making sure they're all, that they meet the IRS regs or loans or for any type of distributions.
So you're kind of the gatekeeper when it comes to making sure that people are complying it?
Absolutely. But we also, because we are widespread and, for example, Hillsborough County just did an RFP for their vendors, and most of the same players are in the market. And so we see their products, we see what they're selling. We also, through efforts that we put forth in, to do our job, we have to have data sharing, okay? And so the companies need to share data with us on account values, loan amounts, whether people have defaulted on loans, things like that. Well, it's called SPARC, the Society for Pension Administrators and Record Keepers. SPARC is the standard for how information is shared. So we were part of the SPARC committee nationally and had them actually request what we call product identifiers in each person's account. And so we know what is exactly being sold out there with each, so we can monitor the types of products, the types of investments that are being marketed out there on a monthly basis. So, yeah, we do have a lot of monitoring out there.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, Suncoast is on there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Yes, I've, Ms. Juipers. Sorry.
I'm wondering about, say, 66 counties in Florida, but what extent are you involved? And I'm wondering with the 67th.
The 67th used to be our client, but they're way up in the, in the north Florida, and they have a very small, they're very, very small, and a new CFO came in and brought somebody down from Georgia with him. So, and we think they're, and we think they're not compliant right now.
To what extent are you involved in the 66 counties?
Exactly as we are here. We provide all the same services to every district in the county.
Are you as involved in date as you are in state?
Absolutely, yeah. And one of the things that we always said is that it doesn't matter if you're a large district or a small district, your needs are all the same as far as what we need to be able to provide for you. We do provide a lot of technology for the employees. You know, we allow people to send distribution requests directly to us, either by fax or original. We also have online places to where if they qualify for a distribution, all they have to do is log online and go automatically get them a certificate so that they can move very quickly for either their loan or a distribution. And we do this for retirees and people who have accounts that were with the district that stayed, that their accounts stayed under your plan, but they're no longer employed here. So fully, 2/3 of what we do is actually with some of your retirees on the distribution side. Ms. Bell?
So basically, what we're gonna do, or what you're proposing, is that we require all new employees and every existing employee who's not currently safe, that we as a board say, "You need now to put aside money and enroll in a 403B or 457B plan, and you have 90 days to opt out of it." Is that correct?
Well, first, the way we set it up, that would be the traditional auto-enroll, is that you inform them and then you do it. Well, we're recommending that through your open enrollment process, when they go through and make their other choices, that this option is there for them, that it says, "Here's what we recommend, here's an easy way for it to enroll, either acknowledge yes, it's okay, or no, I don't want to."
So you have to acknowledge that yes, it's okay.
Right, you have to, yes, you have to acknowledge that yes, it's okay, all right? Then after the first payroll, you have another 90 days to opt out if you change your mind.
And what is going to be the minimum or required amount to be auto-enrolled if they say yes?
If they say yes, we would recommend 3%. That's a national average for people to start.
Okay.
Yes.
And if they don't answer the question, it would be considered a yes or would be considered a no?
Yeah, they won't be able to go to the next screen. And, but even if that happens, okay, unless they've acknowledged, because of the garnishment rules here in Florida, we would not, we would recommend that you not have them enrolled. If they just, if for some reason they skipped that process and did not make the affirmative action, we would say no.
Now, the default investment option that we currently do not offer, or I know that Suncoast has a money market.
There's several businesses that have.
Correct.
Sixteen now.
But in the slide, it says, "Add a default investment option, a principal guaranteed interest-bearing account."
Right.
Okay? That would be a set, guaranteed interest-bearing account that's set when the plan is opened? Or is that going to be based on the market?
It's based on the market, of course. But it's, they have a fixed, the principal is guaranteed, they have a minimum that is guaranteed, but then they also have a current interest rate that's declared every six months.
And who is that investment option through?
That investment option is through Prudential because they are not in the 403B space for K-12. One of the reasons, what we did was we went to a record keeper. We knew that none of the investment providers that were out there in 403B could be a part of doing the default account. If you did that, say, if one of your six was chosen, then you have five really upset folks, okay? Secondly, how do you, how do you produce a good option for the liquidity that's needed in order to have the options in a multiple provider account so that people can actually move their money if they want to to one of the other providers in order to get help? So we, as an administrator, said, "We felt like we were the only ones that could sponsor a program." Now, by the way, we're not licensed and we don't get commissions, okay? The only, we get paid, part of how we get paid is by participation. So yes, our participation will go up, yes, our income will go up, okay? But the thing is, we also have more work to do. So it normally works, you know, normally works that way. But it wouldn't matter to us whether they stay in the default account or move to Balic or move to Suncoast. Wherever they go, if they're participating, we're doing administration for that account. And we get paid no more one way or that paid, you know, or the other. So we get paid that way. So we felt like it was our obligation to actually go to a record keeper that was not in 403B, to actually establish a default investment type of account that would, number one, be liquid so people could move their money, also give a good competitive interest rate, but also provide other investment options. There's about 17 other funds that people can choose from in the one that we would recommend. They're all institutionally priced and liquid, no commissions, no fees can be paid except for to the custodian themselves. The reason for that is that you have to have total neutrality with all the other providers that are there. You can, and the other providers should be promoted as well. But also from a functional standpoint, from an operations standpoint, if somebody opts out, you need a, you need a trust that can send that money with no penalties. Most companies want to hang on to money. That's the way they make money, is to have money stay invested with them. In fact, Deborah Henry in Hill of our county, she said, "Well, why don't we go to RFP for it?" I said, "Okay." I said, "So you're gonna go out and you're gonna go for a bid and you're gonna say, 'Okay, I want a liquid account, 100% liquid, I want a competitive interest rate, I want mutual funds, I want all institutionally priced, I want no compensation out there except for the custodian.'" And oh, by the way, we can't tell you how much money's gonna go in there and how long people are gonna keep it. How many people would you get to bid? None. And the reason that we were able to do this is because we are in 2,000 school districts. And if people start doing automatic enrollment, then the commitment that these folks have done for the liquidity and make sure that things work properly, it's there. And it's only because, and I hate to say it because we're already, because we're so large, they think that they're gonna have some money stick with them.
Ms. Bell? Did you have a follow-up? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So this default account, if they're enrolled, they choose yes, they go, they don't make an, they don't make a choice, so automatically their 3% is gonna go into the default account?
Correct.
Okay? And now that default account comes with, like you said, through a company that's gonna offer other investment options?
Well, you have to have well-rounded, if you put somebody into an account and they subsequently wanna go into mutual funds, but they don't wanna choose another provider yet, you have to give them that option within the default. But you don't default money into it, they have to make an active choice to put their money at risk going into mutual funds.
Well, but if they don't make that active choice, it's gonna go into the default money market account, which is probably, what is that right now, what kind of interest?
About right now, 1.65%.
1.65%.
Right, it's actually a Prudential Guaranteed Income Fund, it's an $18 billion fund. It's an $18 billion fund and it's specifically used for these types of accounts in 401Ks and fine contribution plans across the country.
So when it goes...
It's not like normal money market, excuse me, it's not like the normal money market that you're getting .2 or .3 on right now.
Okay. So it's, it's not an FDIC insured money market then either? It's a guaranteed, it's a, it's a money market guarantee through the stock market, correct?
No, it's, it's guaranteed by the insurance company that's there, an A-plus rated company, which is the Prudential. They do the, they are the guarantees. That's why you always want, if you're going to choose something that has guarantees, you got to look at who's guaranteeing it.
Okay. So, and you've spoken, you said earlier, I think you spoke to the other investment options. So you've talked to these other, like Suncoast and some of the others that, and they know that's part of this, this plan.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually went to them prior to bringing it to our clients because we wanted them to understand what the goals were. Here, your existing providers have had a lot of years to get participation up and they're only at 17%. One thing about a provider out there, first, their first job is to get somebody to commit to save. That's what we call the first sale, is you got, somebody's got to say, "Yes, I'll save." The second is, "Okay, I'll use you because I think you can help me."
Well, I think the first is you got to convince them the reason it's important to save and the advantages, and the advantages that you haven't even mentioned is the tax-free benefit of, of that money going in tax-free that can compound and grow over time, and that is a big selling point.
Oh, absolutely. And part of the education of this, it's not just the auto enroll, there has to be a big education component that goes with this prior to the people being enrolled. Oh, absolutely. And we do handbooks every year for L that actually define these types of things as well.
And I go around to each school in September and I would be sharing that. And I did this last year, I had some slides, some presentation, some presentation we hadn't done in previous years to encourage folks and to tell them what their retirement checks are going to look like, why they need to supplement that, how they could go about that. So that would be part of that presentation in September when I go to the schools as well.
And there could be just as much opportunity for that participation rate to grow if we just focus on that education side of it without requiring an automatic enrollment. I'm, I'm kind of torn, I mean, I, I see very much the importance. Okay?
For years, we have, we have attempted to educate, inform, and to get people involved in making a commitment to save for the retirement. And the numbers haven't changed. I think Steve mentioned that the numbers have pretty much been flat since, at least since I've been here. Not much changed. We've had investment seminars, we've had, you know, our providers come and do trainings, information sharing. It's one of those things that people, and, and it's not just unique to, to us, I mean, it's just people, you know, who are saving for retirement, it is, it's too long on the horizon. This idea came up over a year ago and I've been contemplating whether this is a good thing or not, and then I've had further conversations with Steve and Joe. The, the thing that really hit me strongly was when, nobody really has talked about or realized that that cost-of-living adjustment is gone and your retirement is not going to grow over the years. And this is one way to help supplement that lack of the COLA, not only to just supplement your retirement, but their retirement's going to be flat. They're not going to grow any, any, any 3% COLA over the years when they retire. They've got to start looking at this and it's taken me a year to kind of come around and kind of, and I just made this decision, you know, overnight to bring Steve in to, to give this presentation. I really truly believe this is something that will benefit the employee. And we've had conversations, much like you've had, Mr. Dodd, asking about the providers, I've had the same conversations with them because we've really vetted it through. And Steve will tell you, I'm pretty involved in how this whole thing works with the 403B program, making sure that we have a good selection of vendors for our employees, but we can't make them go out there and do it through information and communication. This is one avenue that truly would help them. But the education is one piece and then they have the opt-out. I mean, we've talked about how would it look? They've got to say, "Yes, I agreed to it," you know, or "No, I don't want it." We don't have to say 3%, that's their recommendation, we could set it anything we want. We're just kind of sharing the information today to kind of get your feedback to see, "Do you think it's a good idea to help the employees out in this thing?" Or would we rather not go in this, this, down this road and say, "The employees need to make their own conscious decision about how they want to invest for their future in their retirement." We shouldn't be making that decision for them. I, I think it's something that, you know, we should be looking out for the employees because we know historically, you know, 18%, that's all that's been hitting this. And then when they get close to retirement, you know, they look at and say, "Gosh, I wish I would have started 25 years ago," or they're counting on drop. But we know what that's going to be, drop's going to be gone eventually, it is going to go away. They've already reduced it, you know, the benefit such that it's almost a flat anyway. So we didn't bring this to you, you know, without having a lot of, putting a lot of thought and due diligence into it. I mean, we, we talked about this last July, I think it was, or maybe even before that. So we've been really thinking about this to see, and it's an added benefit for the employees to, to help them save for retirement. And they can always have the decision to say no.
Ms. Bell, oh, I'm sorry, no, Ms. Bell for us.
Well, I just, I just wanted, I know that when we have the new employees and you have the seminar, part of that training and information sit-and-get moment involves some sort of education about the options that they have. And at this point, looking at the open enrollment from a participant's perspective, it's a very frantic time and it's very hard when you've got that time limit to sit down and really digest it. But when I have attended the training sessions and someone from the actual school, within the, within the context of your school family, has stood by the side of whoever the presenter is and advocated for enrollment, that, that's very powerful. I remember Andreas Seibel over at Christopher High School stood there and, and was very supportive. It, the moment of the sale, when you're there and you're in the, in the, in the heat of getting that information digested, to me, that's what I need to sign on the dotted line. But I walk out with my packet and all my information and then I slip back into my routine and it's chasing the clock. So I think it really comes down to having a very strong system that has a point-of-hire enrollment process. So at the point of hire, you're filling out your paperwork, here's this, here's the PowerPoint presentation, the video presentation that's at Kenji's, and now it's our recommendation that you sign here. It's, that point-of-hire opportunity is critical for enrollment increasing. So my two cents, end of.
Ms. Powers?